All right, it is five o'clock. We'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. Marge, you mind if we listen in?
I don't have it all. Heavenly Father, we come just thanking you, oh God, for just being so good and so merciful unto us, Lord. Well, we pray that you will be in the midst of us today. God, we've got big decisions to make. Help us to make those decisions with sound mind, oh God, with fairness for our citizens, Lord. Heavenly Father, and help us to remember what we were called to, how we were called to serve, the citizens, Lord, and the city of Odessa. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for all your goodness, for all your mercy, and for just loving us in spite of us, Lord. Heavenly Father, just bless this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. All right, review council agenda items. Pastor Lee, Tanglewood Baptist Church, give us invocation, Councilman O'Brien, do the pledges. We do have one proclamation. This was, basically, our sister cities in West Texas have actually sent a proclamation supporting El Paso in the massacre there. I'm just going to read this from, from my normal seat. It just talks about we will all stand together. And, you know, in tragedy, we will, when it happened, I did call the city of El Paso. Left it with the city secretary, because that's the only number I had, and told them that we were here. They needed us, just to let us know that we kept them in our Father's prayers. It was a horrible tragedy. Next, consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled off?
Are we going to move forward with the annexation for the, is that on here, for the truck stop?
Pilot.
Yeah, it's in your public.
Gary, what's under public?
Are we, do we still want to go ahead and proceed with that?
Maybe answer those, yes.
Any other questions?
Without knowing how it comes.
Well, Gary.
That would be my recommendation, at this point, to go ahead and proceed with annex. This one's been their voluntary request. It was actually pending when I got here last year. So this is a company that all along wanted to be in the city at that location.
But is it not affected pending?
I don't, I don't think that, there may be some future effect, but I think right now it's, I've decided to go ahead and grant their voluntary request to be in it.
I think it follows our stance, that you wanted to be annexed. What was the meaning of that?
Whispernet called and asked if we can move item thirteen up further in the agenda. So it was okay after other council actions. I was going to go ahead and do that. He has another meeting at the same time. But he wants to be here to make sure he can answer all the questions for that. So if there's no objections, I'll just move thirteen up there, up to one.
Up to where?
Up to, right before one.
Okay.
So. Public hearing is the Randy Brinley Show. He's back there. So there will be quite a few of those. Item ten will be the issuance. But then, I'm sure we will have citizens who would like to speak.
And we have, we brought in the bond counsel and bond advisor to the briefing. He has a small presentation to work over with y'all.
Yeah, please go ahead and do that.
And that's so that council can ask any questions they might have.
Okay.
So if you're ready, then we'll start. We have Eric Maha with Hilltop Securities, and he's the one that has provided the presentation. And we also have Glenn Opel with Bracewell, that is our bond counsel. And he wants to go over just a little bit about the ordinance that you're actually voting on tonight.
Craig, you said Craig? Craig, your name again, sir?
Eric Maha.
Eric. Yes, sir.
M A C H A, it looks like matcha, so. I work closely with George Wilford here, somebody you might know. He served as advisor to the city. We put together a packet of information summarizing the financing for the certificates of obligation. I thought we could walk through some of the information, certainly any questions, please feel free. And then, I know Mr. Opel may have a few comments on the ordinance itself. The figures shown here in the presentation have been inserted into the ordinance before this evening. Quickly on the cover page, I wanted to point out, you'll notice there's an eighty-one million dollar figure. The certificates were priced yesterday, and they actually sold at a premium, meaning investors bought at hundred and one cents on the dollar, if you will. And so we're able to lower the amount of debt sold, and that still produces ninety-three million in project proceeds. So I wanted to point that out.
Timing is everything.
Timing is everything.
And you'll see with the interest rates, it's, we're near all-time lows, but that is true. And then, we've noted the bond ratings here at the bottom of the cover page. The second page is a snapshot. In total, there were four underwriters engaged to handle the pricing yesterday. Frost Bank led the syndicate. Just a snapshot of the offering document. It was a packet of information prepared and provided to investors about a week before the pricing date yesterday. All information needed to make a decision to purchase was contained within the document. That's a snapshot of that document. Behind tab one, we have some of the nuts and bolts of the transaction, some of the final financing terms tied to the pricing yesterday. Page one, behind tab one, we call this our sources and uses. And this breaks out, as I mentioned, the eighty-one million par amount. That's, that's the amount that the city will pay back interest on. And then, there is about twelve point seven million in premium on top of that. And so the premium can go towards financing costs, shown there at the bottom. And then, the net effect to the city, you all will receive ninety-three million in the construction fund. And we have that scheduled to be delivered September twelfth. And then, there towards the middle, the bottom of the page, you'll see the true interest cost. That's the effective interest rate. Each of the certificates sold at a different rate. Came in at two point six two nine. You may recall, in prior discussions and preliminary analysis, we were estimating around four percent. Some of that was inflated, just to be conservative, and a lot of that's market movement over the last couple of weeks especially. Page two, that's supposed to be the annual payments. Since the current budget has been worked on and tax rates have been evaluated, we kept the two thousand twenty payment on, on the certificates as budgeted. And then, you'll see thereafter, the payments would actually drop to around five point nine five million per year for the term through two thousand thirty-nine. Again, that's about, close to eight hundred thousand dollars the last year, this commission projected in terms of interest costs.
Yes, fantastic.
Page three, real quickly, the rates range from one point oh one percent yields up to two point three nine percent. As I mentioned, that's, that's the two point six effective rate. The certificate will be called or March first, two thousand twenty-eight. So we'll see if we have the opportunity to retire principal early at that time, or refinance or refund for savings that the market allows. You would have that option before two thousand twenty. Behind tab two, as I mentioned, I'll quickly make a comment on the interest rates. The blue squiggly line going back to nineteen ninety-nine is one of the indices we follow in the municipal market. And you can see, we're, we're near all-time lows back in two thousand sixteen. We hit all-time lows, and we're, we're going back to that level. So I thought this was a good chart to show, given just the overall trend in the market. Next page is the same information, just in table form.
Can we blow this up real quick? Put it in the main building?
No, that's a good point. I went back, ten-year treasury is one of the rates we follow, just to get the general trend of the fixed income markets. And last October, right before Christmas or so, that, that rate was close to three twenty. And now we're at one sixty in terms of the ten-year treasury. So it's, it's amazing how much interest rates have declined over the last year or so.
I wish we did have this to show.
Really nice. Very, very nice.
And then, in the back, we have copies of the rating reports, couple pages each. I won't go through those, but they are there for, if you'd like to read those as well.
Are you going to be here for the mob?
Yes.
Yeah, oh. What's up, Paul?
Hello, Paul, we got some things for you.
Yeah.
Anything else?
And we'll let Cillian talk a little bit to the actual ordinance.
Sure, thanks, thanks, every city. Glenn Opel with Bracewell, city's bond counsel. The action item that you have on the agenda is the adoption of the, of the ordinance authorizing eighty-one million dollars in certificates of obligation. That ordinance is in substantially the same form as you have in your agenda backup. It has been modified to include the pricing information that has come from Hilltop today, and that has been provided to the staff. It authorizes the certificates to be issued in accordance with law. As you know, we published a notice of intent to issue, adopted that resolution prior to this, and we published in accordance with law. So we are ready to go to the ordinance. It sets forth, the ordinance sets forth the terms and mechanics for the payment of the certificates of obligation. It also approves a paying agent registrar agreement. That is the entity to which the city makes its debt payments, and that entity pushes those payments out to all the various bondholders. It also approves the sale of the bonds to the underwriters in accordance with the terms and pricing that Eric went over. It also contains the necessary provisions that you need to have in the ordinance to comply the covenants and agreements to make the bonds tax exempt under federal income tax law. At the time of issuance, we will deliver an opinion that says that the bonds are issued in accordance with law and that the interest on the bonds is exempt from, excluded from income for the purpose of federal income tax. It also contains the provisions that you need to have in the ordinance for the underwriters to be able to underwrite the bonds in accordance with federal securities laws. That's kind of, obviously, a very quick overview of a lot of pages, but happy to answer any questions y'all have on the process or the.
So when this is presented red, it, it still is red as a ninety-three million dollar bond, even though eighty-three, excuse me.
It's actually the issuance of eighty-one million dollars in principal amount of debt.
Okay.
So it's a, from the perspective.
So roughly, it's eighty-seven percent of what we had approved. I just took that down just a little.
And that's, and Eric's big, that's really a function of where the pricing is in the market.
Sure, sure.
To generate the ninety-three million.
Absolutely.
There's a, the couponing results in premium.
Exactly.
So it drives down the bar.
It's a, it's a day of the market.
We still receive ninety-three million in cash to put towards all of our projects.
Okay.
And I was talking to Mr. Opel and Ms. Monty earlier. There's a, there's an article out in Bloomberg today in regards to just this thing, about now is the time to utilize bonds. Yeah, for infrastructure projects, because of the market value that's running on it.
You're right.
So it's, it's about, that's time. We're not going to have a better time.
And we don't get the credit for being that tired as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the staff working on this.
I just have two copies of the ordinance with the, the slight changes, if anyone would like a copy. If you would like it electronically, just let me know, and I'll email it to you tomorrow.
Now, do you have, do we have something we can, we need to read, or is it just the motion?
It is just the motion, this is it right here. It would just be reading the caption off that to consider the adoption.
So does it need to change this from ninety-three to eighty-one?
It should change that, it should read that as.
That's what I asked.
And Deidre?
Yes.
We can have this scanned and have this available, so we can discuss those charts and stuff that you're upping. That's what we're going to do then.
For this meeting?
Yep.
We put Phillip on a mission.
Yeah.
Yes.
We'll put this in it now, so Eric can certainly talk about that in the opening session.
Okay, I think that's great.
That'd be great.
I think we will certainly bring him on.
You tell everybody the status, nevermind, I won't say this.
I don't know, man.
Oh, it's lovely. Fall kisses. Okay.
Any other, of course, public hearing, Randy has, anything else on the, on those pages?
Is there anything I need to answer on number seven, two, three, no?
I actually, I don't have a question for them, I have a question for us. Have we specifically, or are we specifically stating what? Because I see like fire station and things like that. Do we have specific areas, things that we're wanting to utilize this number for?
Yes, absolutely.
Otherwise, we could not go to a bond for that specific.
This is, this is what we put up on our website, and, yeah.
Is that on the shelf?
No, there's a cover.
And we'll have copies of that.
I have the original one, but.
Right.
But we cannot speak pro or, pro or against in this. We're just keeping.
Yeah, and this information, we did visit the goal about, because then we're very specific that we be cautious in how we present the items. So this is part of the information that we took and working to grant.
But we can't, if, if we choose to make a comment, we can't say.
I think, I think we, yes.
You, you can explain your vote, if you say, I'm voting for this because, I mean. You're on the dimes, I think. Just a point of reference. That document is, is consistent with the, the purposes for the issuance of the certificates were put out and were published in the paper from the ordinance, the resolution of intention to issue. Those purposes are also then, contain the same exact identical languages in the units. So then, there's ordinance language, ordinance for number two to go for various purposes for which, yeah.
Any more questions or comments? And Phillip is getting his copies.
He's scanning this presentation there? Yes, sir.
Great. Anything under ordinances, other than the debt issuance?
I don't, I don't think so, make sure.
Okay, and we'll move to the resolutions. Of course, thirteen is being moved up. Is there anything left on the rest of it?
No, sir.
Okay, then we move to appointments on boards. And number nineteen is when we will discuss, into the executive session, to discuss city attorney.
I will go ahead and discuss eighteen.
Sure, yeah, if you're ready.
I'm, I'm ready, go ahead, your application is on.
Okay.
Please on the side of board.
Okay. And council, I sent out two applications.
She does, she does want to serve.
Yes. I sent out two applications to y'all for the Odessa Housing Finance Court for two interested individuals, which was Dow Kelly and Virgil Trauer. Oh, yeah.
Roy, have you heard?
No, Roy has decided just to serve through the end of ours.
Do we want to go ahead and put those two on, or do we want to?
Do we have two spots?
Yes, you have spots for Jim Richter and Roy Allen.
Oh, yeah. I think that would be good. We have, I know Dow Kelly and.
They have plenty of times to sit in that guy's.
We've got two for two.
All right. Okay. Anything else on the agenda? All right, item three, Parks Foundation update.
I still want to do it.
I'm ready. Oh, I'm ready. I heard y'all had some money, I'm like, I'm here.
You drop a quarter here, Steve. Where, where?
We're going to show you what we're fixing this thing on. That was so nice.
Denise Swann, this is, she's the president of Odessa Parks Foundation, and Jim Cox is the president of the Odessa Parks Foundation. And I guess y'all have been on board now for ever? Yeah. We wanted to give a quick annual report of what we're doing as far as projects, and also the finances, kind of where we are with the finances. Just a quick overview, and plus really kind of coming down the line. Finances.
I'll give you a quick overview on the, the dollar bill donation. The, of course, it's a voluntary, voluntary program by our water bill customers, that they donate a dollar a month. And so far, we've collected two million, two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars over, been about six years. We started in two thousand fourteen. So none of that money.
It was before. No, seven, seven oh seven.
Huh?
Seven, seven oh seven.
Is when it started?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That might be when it came on.
Yeah, maybe. It's been that long. That's probably why we've collected it for two million, three hundred thousand dollars.
Fantastic question, Steve, do you ever, I saw on Facebook, I think it was, where they were talking about the water bills, you know, just revisiting the app for the water bills. Do we ever revisit, like on Facebook, you know, via the city's webpage to say, you know, hey, because they, I know they get a big packet when they sign up, but there's so much stuff in that packet.
There's a, there's a link, actually, from the city's website, there's a link that goes to the Odessa Parks Foundation website that kind of gives an overview of what we've done, and lists all the parks, and shows playgrounds, and, and, in fact, we're updating that. I've got a.
But just to remind people that you can sign up for that dollar donation. I think it'd be good every now and then to.
Well, not right now.
It's supposed to be put on there, and you're being, you have to call as.
To take a.
Yeah. Can you increase it if you want? Absolutely. And will, how much do you want it to run? Possessive pursuit.
But we've taken that money, and we've spent a million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand on our park projects. And Steve's got the detail and all that, all the parks that we've worked on. The first park that we did with the playground equipment, it cost eighty thousand dollars, and now it's up to two hundred and twenty thousand, so.
Same equipment?
Pretty much.
A little bit of.
A little bit of.
But we've got, right now, we have a hundred and ninety-three thousand to spend. We've got a contract for two hundred and twenty-six thousand for.
Royalty Park, correct.
So, you know, we're trying to spend all that we can. And some of that money, based on the formula that the city agreed on, is going into a foundation. We've taken that interest and basically put it in our general fund that I'll pay for.
Moving some parts, matching funds that, more than ethnic associations, if they want to match some of their funds, to make an improvement, and then also to ensure as long as you have the program for the future. And hopefully, we can take on bigger projects as that endemic grows. That's what the game plan is.
Finances are audited annually, and we give that report to city. So if y'all need a copy of that, usually, we give it to you.
The great news, nineteen parks that we've put major playgrounds in since inception of the program had no cost to taxpayers.
That is great.
Back here.
Yeah, yeah.
You'll get the press release before you leave.
Yeah. No, no cost to the taxpayers. Nineteen park sites out of thirty-six park sites that we have. And these, this is high-quality playground material. This is, the LSI is one of the best on the market, probably the best. Walk thickness, thickness of the classics, everything is, is top quality, and they're going to be there thirty years from now. That's one reason I'm, I'm doing the best. What we, and thanks to my easel, I appreciate that easel.
Do the next one, Josh.
Did you? The man I wife.
Hey, I sign checks, that's what he needs.
This is Royalty Park, and north is that away? Just really, for a quick overview of what the playground, what we've kind of planned for this. Every time that we put a playground in one of these neighborhood parks, we actually master plan the entire park side. So I'm ready, if we ever have the funding or the need to take Royalty Park to the, to the next level. We have a sketch, we've got a walking trail, a new basketball court, and this whole open space right here will accommodate soccer, art, football. This is some of the best grass we have in, in the entire system. It's beautiful. There's a lot of recreation programs that used to go on here a long time ago, but we don't have that problem since the internet came on. And so, we have soccer fields there, and, and they practice baseball there regularly, it's used a lot. We're going to come into the north, that we can.
Where is Royalty?
Off Sunset Street.
Second is about a block or two over from Grand U to the west, right, Steve?
Yes.
Oh, is that the name of that park?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
There's no park equipment there now. There is an old basketball court that sits right there. This is a drainage ditch. We're going to put it up in this corner. There's a bunch of residences right here, residences right there, a small church over here, commercial properties and manufacturing over here. So this will be located nearest the residences. It'll also have security light. As I've said before, I don't need the playground equipment. This is exactly what, like what we did at Ramirez Park. You were there? Then you were there. This is the very same piece of equipment. The formula that we use for these type of neighborhood playgrounds is spinning, the little spinner cup, seat. Then there's a spring rider behind this, and then the climbing structure and a set of swings. And then, this is all, of course, artificial turf that's the safety searching for the entire side. And then, we've got a perimeter sidewalk that goes around the whole thing. And this will be, if you've been in, over Ramirez Park, fantastic piece of equipment. One of the neatest pieces of equipment that we put in. We're going to repeat that there, because it's about the same service area as what Odessa Park sign is. So we still have Crump, this in the radar. We've got Crump Park. When we make improvements to the water system, it's there and get that particular plumbing, I guess, rerouted. So I think that's the game plan. Since we get that rerouted, we'll put something similar to this, that side. And then, depending on tonight, if we go through the ninety, something million, we're trying to only get eleven million. I'll work with it. We've got two. Two park sites in there, and I'm hoping that the Odessa Parks Foundation, I'll take those park sites and get this type of playground equipment on those three park sites that we're looking at, to use taxpayers' money to make other improvements. So it's stretching our dollars, and this is one of the best programs in the entire state. I get phone calls about this and the point settings every, probably weekly. We could have been rich if we'd have put a patent on those point settings that we have at Star Rock Village. Two phone calls today, going up, where we can buy them. So I'll say.
In my head.
Yeah, I'm making stock and get a wealth machine, get out of here. Any questions or anything about the foundation? That's kind of our annual report. On average, we're looking at sixteen to eighteen thousand dollars a month is what the, the revenues are averaging.
I have a question. Do y'all get any kind of response by donations from our oil companies that are begging billions of dollars in our area?
Well, most of the time, the oilfield companies want to donate something, and think they're doing it, doing good, and then it ends up being a drill site or something that we can't really use.
But as far as money, have they been donating?
We named it after them.
They don't, Star Rock Village.
Star Rock Village. We'll get like.
Paul Festival and things like that.
You know, dollar donations, maybe ten thousand to sponsor twenty-five thousand.
We've had a lot.
But the money that you're talking about, no, they don't make big donations like that.
Chevron helped out that park up more.
Yeah, they did. Sure did. And the new master plan? That, and the priorities, we can attack them.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
You can ask them for as much money as you want.
Oh, okay. Well, that's like sucking a dog on a earth. I don't have a problem asking for money.
Yeah, I'm just asking for a friend. What's the weight capacity on those spinning things? Just asking for a friend. I have. Those are fun. Holy son.
Aren't they fun?
Yes, it's fun. Somebody said join. Just asking for a friend. Thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all very much, thank y'all for your.
Thank you very much. Thank y'all very much.
Appreciate it.
It's good to see you. Yes.
Thanks.
Thank y'all.
All right, next time for Odessa Housing Finance Corporation Projects update. Ms. Miller.
Hi, Jill.
Jill Miller.
Hi, Jill. How are you?
How are you?
I'm good. Thanks for inviting me. I appreciate it. So I asked Irma what she wanted me to talk about, and she said, you can. I'm just going to give you a brief update on some stuff that we have going on. We currently, for those of you who don't know, have purchased some homes and renovated those and rented those. We currently have six homes that we have rented. The most expensive rent we have is a thirteen hundred and twenty-four square foot, kind of long driver, that rents for thirteen hundred bucks. We just finished a rehab on one of Hancock that we put almost eighty thousand dollars into. It's being rented to a new person that we've been on a school district. And it's four bedroom, two and a half bath, twenty, almost. And, um, it's four bedroom, two and a half bath, twenty, almost twenty-five hundred square feet. And we're running at eight hundred. So, um, we've done some improvements there and have six homes that are being rented to people. And it's well relative to what market rate is, for sure. And the apartment complex of eighty-seven, for those of you that haven't been out there to see it, hopefully, everybody will get out there at some point to see it. Um, it's at a hundred percent occupancy. It has been since the day every building opened, the day we received a, um, CO on each building. They were already completely full and it's continuing to stay that way. Um, this summer, we've partnered with the food bank. And so after school, we get a snack for the kids. And this summer, we have a lunch, so they brought in a lot of people. And we have forty to forty-eight kids participating on a daily basis in that program. And then on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, um, the Ellen Noel will come out and do an art project with the kids for an hour.
Wow.
So we kept them, the more we kept them busy, the better. And we do have one of the churches that comes every Thursday night. They have anywhere between sixteen and eighty kids that attend, depending on how hot it is. Um, they do a back cut drive before school started, we'll do that again. Um, and then when it starts getting cooler, they come out and bring a trailer and they do coats. And it's not just you wear a size six and you get handed this coat. They actually get to go within shop in this trailer. So I thought the first time we did it, that it would be something that we would just be out there for an hour. We handed out coats for four hours. Because they got to pick what they wanted and they loved it every second of it, so.
Jill, what's that big building right in front of the apartments that just came up?
That is, um, a, could it be a Dollar Temple?
Oh, okay.
Um, so it will be one of the larger Dollar temples. It's going to have some roofs in it. And we were really hoping to be able to put something out.
Some roofs.
On produce. We're hoping we could fit something that was more of a grocery store and didn't get anything from the grocery store, but it'll be as close to it. Right now, currently, the residents fit without more than a seven eleven to go to. Because the only thing that's up there, there's a subway, a domino, there's a song in a seven eleven. So, and this is the one thing that is going to be in that retail store. But they're, they're building it and it will look like the apartments that they were right now. We talked about some metal, but for some reason, they did metal first and then they'll be putting an epist and a stem rod in line. So other than the yellow sign, it will blend in with the neighborhood and be very compatible to what we do. Um, so the second set of apartments, um, is actually, um, we're working on right now. But y'all will be, that went to PNC and you'll be hearing at the first reading tonight, Fred. We are working with Commonwealth, it's a developer that we've been, um, working with. Craig Alter was actually with Delphi Housing on the first one. Dan is not going to be doing any more developments. He was our partner in that. He's kind of settling some of his development goal. And Craig went to work with Commonwealth and he had kind of helped us with the master plan. Was very familiar with what we were doing. So it kind of fit that he understood. So, um, he currently has a nine percent tax credit that's in Andrews that he's working on. So he's out here and diligently believes in West Texas and is out of Austin, but understands kind of what the need is and wants people to do. So, um, we appeared before ODC and I think it will come to y'all, but they did approve, based on the grant criteria, we set our rent rates at eighty percent for that. Um, that would be on a one-bedroom, it would be below market at about three hundred and sixty dollars. On a two-bedroom, it's five hundred and seventy dollars. And on the three-bedroom, it's like nine thirty-seven. Below market.
Below market.
Below what the average market is currently. And so that's a significant. Um, in order to make that do work, we're doing a conventional, we're not issuing any bonds or anything for it. So those funds from ODC are going to help a lot with the infrastructure. And then we've put an ask into PSP for six point two five million. So hopefully, they will hear that by the end of the week and we'll get a decision. But they have visited the first site, believe in it, want to replicate what we're doing and many more. Happy going to Andrews next week to talk to city council and commissioners over there. So, um, they definitely want to know how things can be done and what can be done. So they're really interested, I think. And hopefully, I've told them I decided this one, but they're meant where it is, so now it's their turn. Maybe they'll do it. Ready for that, crush fingers.
How many apartments is it going to be?
Two hundred and sixteen. And so it'll be bigger than the first one, but rent will be for people between eighty to a hundred and twenty percent. So if some people low, they could afford it, could definitely get there. Or if there's a voucher, we won't be denying those by any means. But if somebody comes in and makes between eighty all the way up to a hundred and twenty percent of our area median income, they can all probably win there.
Does that include teachers?
Oh, that would, well, teachers, firefighters, police officers.
It would include some two-income councils, definitely. So, um, median income at eighty per, per family at eighty percent per family at four is fifty-nine thousand right now. So, um, we talked about the retail spot. Um, we're also working on coming back and asking ODC for the funds to do the infrastructure for the single family. We can do a hundred and five single family. That's gone to PNC as well. I think you'll be hearing that reading. Um, so that would be a hundred and five single-family homes. There would be patio homes all the way up to some larger houses that would go into that subdivision, but it would finish out the subdivision, pretty much. So just the retail in the front would be the only thing left. And we do have some developers that have done some strip centers that are looking at that as well. Uh, so that would get us where we can be doing the infrastructure at the same time. The goal would be that we would save some economies of scale if we could fit it out and put all of it in at once. But the first one just gets water, streets and sewer to that con, that separate complex, that first ask. The, the second ask would be to get it all the way to the back and it goes all the way to Slidemire. So there's forty-eight acres planned, if you're unaware. That's a lot of land. So, um, that's what's on the master plan. That would finish that. The other project that we've been working with the city on, if, that I think you're all familiar, is the lots that Encore and the, in the city have. There's thirty-three lots on the south side on Fitch, right down from that. There's, we had enough land to put in a cul-de-sac and do twelve more. So we're working on a partnering bid to, um, get the infrastructure put in on that. The, the city, you committed half a million dollars to that. Grow Odessa has also committed half a million dollars to get that done. So the estimate on that is kind of under nine hundred thousand is what the estimate is. We'll save that out for bid.
Yeah, that's the key, right there.
We're working on getting that out for bid. Um, and so the city will put the infrastructure, since there's going to be city dollars in that, um, we'll be putting that out for bid and then we will do a joint with Rita to put the houses out. As I say, we've got, um, four plans that go from twelve hundred square feet up to close to seventeen hundred square feet.
That's what we're working on.
We'll have some porches in the front, hopefully make everybody feel like, since there's some cul-de-sac type looking, there is cul-de-sac in both of them for people who want to come out. One and two car garages, the two car garage, hopefully four bedroom.
Actually, one for some four bedrooms.
And we're definitely working on that, on, um, credit counseling. I don't know if you're aware that our other organization is affordable as credit counseling. And so we have counseled people to be able to purchase homes in that program. We have about a hundred and eighty clients in that that we follow up with every sixty days to see where they're at. And the process, they, they don't have to buy a house. If they just want to come in and fix their credit, they can do that. But most of, that's what the goal is, is to purchase a house. And then we teach our own buyer education class that teaches them everything they need to know from start to finish for the process of buying a house. Um, we're currently using last year's CDB dollars. We'll finish those up hopefully at the end of this month. We have a, a roof that's being done right now and another roof in the works that'll start in next year's money. Roofs are very expensive, I don't want to tell the custom. But unfortunately, we don't get to help as many families as we want to when we do roofs. But after the storm that we had, we literally have people that have holes in their roofs. So there's a lot of them if they're, the one that we had a year ago, we're still catching up some of those. But the, the last one, I mean, every time we get back to one, it just gets worse. So there are desperate needs. And we did write a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, federal home loan grant that could be done, used for rehab. Um, hopefully, we'll hear something on that by the end of this month. It just depends on whether it's for, or not, is whether Odessa, the other, but it could be used in the, in the camera for rehab. And so we are always looking for other dollars than what we just kind of beg you for all the time. We look for more funds out there and we threaten many grants to do that program again. So I attended, um, the TAP conference, which is Texas Association of Affordable Housing Providers. And last month, that was the largest conference in the United States for affordable housing. They had almost twelve hundred attendees. So anytime y'all hear about TAP, I mean, Michael's been many times. Um, if you want to hear what everybody's doing, that's great work from all over the United States, not just the state of Texas. I encourage you to go to that. Uh, there was a, um, breakout session on creating solutions to fund projects. And in one of those, Austin has done something that's very different. Uh, they see a huge need for that workforce mill that we're talking about this well. They can't house teachers for what it costs to live in Austin. And now they've all gone out to the brown dock and the surrounding areas and that's getting so high that they're having to maybe go farther out. And so they have huge problems, just like we do. Maybe it's not based on oil, maybe it's based on what things are brought into their area. But there's other places in the state that see the same need that we do. And so, um, Edwina Carrington, who used to be the head of the Texas Department of Housing Community Affairs, has always worked on some equity funds. And she went out and got ten philanthropists in the area to start, help her start an equity fund and to put money into deals. Um, since then, they've got a lot of foundations, banks to partner with them. It's grown significantly. So they're helping to go in and what they're using the funds for is to take a project that, like what we just worked on eighty-seventh, that would get to its fifteen-year affordability and then be able to be purchased by somebody more longer affordable and the rates go up drastically. Or sometimes it's another project, they just tear it down and build something maybe that's so expensive, nobody can afford it. Uh, they're buying those, keeping the affordability, but doing it for people from sixty to a hundred and twenty percent of median income. Um, we don't really have the projects that does like that, but just what I said, I've asked for PSP. There's a backup plan if PSP says no for some equity funds that we'll have to go in to get this due time. And so, um, Dan O'Day will be here tomorrow. I think must have been received an invitation to attend and hear him speak. But he was the partner, he will prove it was on the first one. That's no longer going to be doing any more building, but he understands. He's pocketed that fund. He knows how to set up funds. He's been in the business for thirty-eight years and he sees a huge need to bring that to Odessa. So he'll be presenting out on the complex tomorrow in our education room at two o'clock. I really encourage you, if you fit in your calendar, to come and listen because it's going to be really important for our staff and Odessa community needs that, just like Austin does.
And Council, I did post that meeting, so y'all are more than welcome to. So, so if I have any other questions?
Just a question, when you go to a national conference like that.
That was a state. We just had ten of the national people. It's the largest one in the country, it's in Texas.
Can you pull a lot of that into Texas? I mean, with the municipal laws and state laws and all that kind of stuff, is it fairly universal?
Oh, yeah, developers will, as far as developers want to come. The, I'm talking to a developer that'll be here on Monday to talk and they're out in Alabama. So they'll come from all over.
I mean, it seems like Texas.
The insurance that we use is out of California. So the insurance agent that's doing the deal on the one out there that Dan uses on all of his projects, he's out of California. Came all the way from California. So, so they come from all over. They're from New York, I mean, twelve hundred people, not from Texas. So I sit on the state of Texas Association of Local Housing Clients. I sit on that board, the president of Texas Association of Community Developments. Our conference has had about two.
So what more, what more do you need from us from the council?
Just support on what we're doing, support when we bring that to ODC. I think that everybody thought outside the box, any more creative ways to pick outside the box. One of the things that Austin did was actually, y'all were talking about issuing a law. Austin issued a term of fifty million dollar jizzle from a law just for affordable housing. So, um, there's a lot of communities that think way outside of the box. I'm glad that we're stepping and taking a step out of our box. But anytime we all want to take a whole lot more steps, there's a ton of stuff out there that's working. That's when that was like, and I understand you're happy with it. But, I mean, you can get as far as that and what they do.
You can get us that information?
I can be there what they do, exactly how we do it.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jill.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, Adam on here is the, uh, ethics ordinance. Uh, if you remember, the, uh, council, when y'all came on, we had the, uh, council retreat. Uh, that was discussed there. Uh, then I guess it was, what, two and a half months ago, we brought those in and we talked about those. So, uh, legal finally took the California out of that ordinance that we looked at. And so, uh, just bring that up if anybody has any questions. Legal's here, we can ask, or if there's anything else that needed to be changed or to read back through it, so.
These are, this also is going to be utilized by the various committees too, correct?
Yes. Yeah.
So whose, whose ordinance did we actually copy this?
Belmont or?
Belmont, Belmont, California.
Belmont, California. But it was very California. It was a good ordinance. And so that was the.
What was the population size of Belmont? I, I, I. I don't know.
I can find that out.
It's like ninety-something thousand.
She'll find it.
No, I can't. The minister just checked in the election of the DNC. Thank you. Oh.
No, it must be in there because it's just.
No, it's not in there. It's not in there.
Tom, any questions?
None more.
Any questions?
I don't think so.
Okay, fine. All right, questions?
I don't get it. Thank you. But I, I found it, right? Is that in page three?
Yeah, I think so. I have a few and then I've got a manager's.
Okay, do you?
You know, I didn't have any. I, I do have a question though in regards to, uh, and that's the reason why I asked you about committees, because we're looking at the golf committee and I for attendance. I think that ought to be just a part of, you know, this code of ethics as such that you're, you are to attend. You know, it's just part of being appointed.
Can you put?
Uh, you can do that, but we also, at the beginning of the article on boards, there's already a section that has some.
Which is separate.
General things and, uh, that was on the list to ask if y'all would want to consider that.
I just think that, you know, it's, it's, it's sad that we have to bring it up in this meeting and have to act on it, but that should be something that when they come onto a board, they know their responsibilities and their obligations and.
Expectations.
Expectations, thank you. And so, uh, anyway, that was just the only point I have, but outside that, no, I thought it was fine.
If you want, um, presuming that you were to pass that on the first reading between now and the second reading, we could change that from an ordinance amending the golf committee to just putting that requirement on all, in wording. And then I'll make that change and then send that out to the council so you can all look at it for a future.
I, I just think they need to know that before this, you know, what's your responsibility? What's your expectations with some meetings? What la, 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 la to where, uh, there's no excuse.
You might want to consider, uh, as you move forward, the next time you have a, go through, maybe after the next council election and have a lot of appointments to committees. Many cities have a orientation session where they bring in, usually they use your city term to just kind of tell them what the expectations are. And then, uh, NARMA has some information for each one of the boards we can hand out. And so we'll, unless you tell us otherwise, the staff will proceed to work on it.
That's a good idea. People just have to have, they've got to know, well, I mean, even if something you could email out.
So, so besides the golf, the golf advisory board, what other boards have been having issues with people attending? You know?
I do keep track of it.
I do keep track of it. At one point, the ODC was having some, some issues and that was brought forth to the, to the individual board members. And now they're aware of, um, making sure that they do attend and not exceeding the, uh, number of absentees. And, um, the parks board had had issues a while back and so that was addressed. And now it seems that everybody's, no problem.
I am a little frustrated with the animal control. You know, here we are several months into this year, we haven't had a meeting yet.
And you have one on the fifteenth?
Yeah. We do have one on Thursday, but that's the first one we've had. Since I was appointed and even before that.
And after, after all of the publicity of it, you would have thought we would.
Well, some of the people have actually, they've actually moved away. They were really one of the ones that were standing and pushing for that. They were really one of the ones that were standing and pushing for that. And I don't think two of them have moved away. One, both were chairors, I think, at one time.
Oh, really?
So, like, transferred?
Like, I don't know how often they are too many, you know, animal control. But like, P&amp;Z is meeting quite often, especially during the busy times and things like that. I just noticed when four approved, five approved, six might approve, and then, you know, you can tell there's some differences. People attending, but I mean, that's a pretty hefty schedule.
Thirty hours on the last agenda.
Yes, it is pretty expensive.
Is it possible you could send us out attendance updated within ten weeks?
We went over that with.
Yes, we did.
Last board appointee that we got listed, everybody?
Yes, yes, but if you want me to update.
Update.
Okay.
Oh, I have a question, and this is so stupid, and she's, that's why she's laughing. You know, we get taken to lunch sometimes. Can people buy our lunch still?
I think that's a question we need to ask. I mean, if it's, maybe you say it's up to twenty-five dollars or something. I think if it's two hundred dollars, then, you know.
I know that in one of the ethics things that I was reading.
That's called normal pricing out here right now.
You know, in the beginning, when we were first going through the election process, it seemed like there was something in there that said it couldn't exceed fifty dollars. Do you recall anything like that?
Well, could you, mother?
I don't recall that. That might have been during when y'all were a candidate, not necessarily.
I wanna say it was in some of the ethics stuff that we were reading.
That's probably state ethics. That's state. Is there, can you put a limit on it?
You can, and you, you really shouldn't worry about things like that. Now, there's a, if you have somebody offering you to buy your meal after flying you to Dallas, letting you attend a Cowboys game in your private box, that, that's valuable enough that it needs to put that.
I mean, I'm just thinking of the little old guy that gave me a bag of jalapenos and figs the other day.
Figs?
Figs. I've never, I've never had a fig in my life. I guess it's a fruit.
Big Newton.
That was the only thing I knew, was a big Newton. But, yeah, it's a little fruit thing, and you kind of chop off the end of it and suck that junk out. My father-in-law had to teach me that.
Well, any, any ordinance you adopt should have a reasonable standard.
I don't think fake a fig would be reported.
They often, they often use words like incidental or inconsequential or something. And then you can define that to mean like, for instance, a simple discussion meal where you go out and they're, they're lobbying you to get you to support this or that, or do as I'm changing. So we can put in there some reasonable standard, and you define the standard. We can add in some new wording to the mayors document.
Yeah. I mean, I don't wanna break anything.
You can't prevent people from giving you a gift.
It's like Christmas, you get the cake from A to B. We've gotten stuff from Land grabbers, popcorn.
Around the holidays, it's not unusual all over Texas for people to give you things. And again, there's a difference in a ten, a spot horn, or some great West Texas. And someone giving you, you know, a weekend at the horse races or at the downs or something. There's kind of a difference. Now, I'm saying, those are questions I've gotten from my past council members.
Really?
On that, that's a little questionable. You'd have to fill out some things to work on some.
But I think the great thing, that is, when you ask those questions, I mean, that's, that's the key part.
That's part of that. You can say, "Protectable, cup of coffee, a meal." That's not a legal violation.
Okay, so you'll just make those changes and send those out by which reading? We have got six minutes.
So are we gonna hold?